Sorry, of course. Okay, calling the meeting to order at nine thirty-seven. All right. No. Oh.
I'll just add.
Okay. That sounds great. Oh, yeah, we need to cut off because we really do need to have what's posted is what we work from. Um.
In the future.
Alrighty, uh, let's see. So call to order? Alan Delwich? Oh, we don't usually call that. Is this the wrong meeting?
Here.
Okay, we just called it order. We don't call the names. Okay. That's what I thought. I'm sorry, I might be mixing up two other meetings. Um, anyway, Alan Delwich.
Here.
Winter. Anne Nichols.
Here.
John Maynard.
Here.
And welcome, Pat Sitzman. Also in the audience is Carol Campbell and Audrey Gray with Crane. Farley McDonough is here and Elektra Johnson, our director. Stop it, please. Okay, moving on to public comment. I'll open the meeting to public comment. Hearing none. Don't believe anybody's on the Zoom, closing the public comment. And next we'll move on to approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the March minutes as is?
So move.
Moved by John Maynard, second by Barb. Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries and on to financial reports and.
Yeah, and we actually do have December, January, and February, but I distributed those late to Elektra. It was like Sunday.
Yeah, it was Sunday, which is what I added.
Yeah, it.
Whatever you want.
I don't, has the board seen them?
I did.
I sent them out last, I sent you out last night.
Oh, you did? Okay. Okay.
Again, I, I will, I will.
Well, I can go ahead and briefly go over them. We were, of course, waiting. The accountant didn't want to do December until we got the letter from the Treasurer's Office on what the actual AV or the actual property taxes was likely to be. And so we did get that a couple of weeks ago, I guess. So she finished the financials. And what the Treasurer says we may collect is one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one thirty-three, which in the December report, they record as unavailable property taxes and then reverse the entry the next month. But that turned out to be pretty close to what I had guessed, which was in the budget, a hundred and what, seventy-seven thousand, I think. So not, not a great deal difference there. And so Jane, I'll just look at probably February where we had a cash in the bank of eight hundred and four thousand dollars. Not a lot of activity, obviously, through the first two months. We'd collected twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seven in property taxes. So I'd be happy to, and actually, the March bank statement I have shows us at a hundred and eight, hundred and four thousand. So there's just not a lot of activity yet, other than snow plowing, which clearing the sidewalks has been a constant expense. So I'd be happy to answer questions.
Anything for Anne? Anything for Anne? Very good. Is there a motion to approve? The, what month was that?
It'd be December.
December, thank you.
January and February.
December, January, and February financials.
So moved.
Moved by Barb, second?
I'll second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. None opposed, all moving on, let's see, to old business. All right, Park Row update.
So, um, it's been a little bit of a moving target this month with Park Row because initially, um, initially, uh, you were, I met with Denise at the city and I also, I've never done Robert. The first, at the beginning of the month, she wanted to demo the building. And so that's what I was trying to help facilitate. And then she called me again and she new construction on the building. So I tried to walk her through the bidding process and she said she doesn't have a permit, but she does. She has a property. She does not have construction documents. She is a building. She has a demo. So I was trying to work with her on that and I think she's kind of she's to get out of her and she doesn't want to do this. So, um, I met with her again to try to walk her through that. John Weiss was in town. Could do a four, a ten ninety-one. For August. But she wants four, so I've also reached out to the nation. I've reached out to my meeting with Toby Manett this week to look at it. My Calgary to look at it. Um, and then I'm also meeting with those new owners who I'll tell you about from Colorado. They were possibly interested in that stuff as a grant. So I'm trying to get things moving on it and she's, I've probably talked to her on both. So I've been trying to like right now, as it stands, I spoke with Fred yesterday. Um, Fred, the city, the, the and I spoke with Denise. The city is trying to determine if they will renew the permit because the permit was to actually either reconstruct it, the property improvement permit, if it expires in May, to either reconstruct it and have it term in May, um, or to rip it down. And I don't really know which direction she's, she thinks that if she goes on to it, it increases the numbers of units if it makes it. So, um.
Are we just talking about the little house, Elektra? Not the whole property? Because weren't they trying to sell the whole property? Okay.
The other stuff is that.
Okay.
To get some. So, um.
I saw, I saw a group of people looking through it in the last few days.
Yes.
Looked like their people or family or
Yeah.
associates.
Yeah, and I've been bringing people in and trying to just.
But it looked like the owner.
Yeah.
Really taking a look, see.
There, she just wants to.
So has she declined our demo, support for demo offer?
Yes, um, yes. So that's the other piece is I was trying to determine what we wanted to cope with and what we when the city says they could, there's, there's a clause in there where they can renew the permit or not. They can force them to do it or they could renew it if it's undue. Uh, undue burden, but, but I don't know if it is an undue burden. It's both of them. So I don't, it's, it's in a very nebulous state. And that's basically the update.
Pat?
To refer to, um, I wasn't a member at the last.
Sure, we're on your.
Oh, sorry.
Is that better?
Yes.
Um, I wanted a couple of comments and I appreciate your update. In the last minutes, um, Ms. Yang told you that, uh, the insurance company had forced her to rebuild. And I want to clear up that there's not an insurance company on the planet that can do that. That said, a lender could. I'm wondering if the lender who has holding that property on a loan is demanding this. And that's why she's panicking because there's three things that could have happened. One, if that went below X for the collateral, the lender can call the loan. Okay, that's why she's panicking. The, the insurance company is already settled. I know that. It's been a year. If the second thing is she would have to put up other collateral for that loan. She doesn't have it. Okay, she's very probably leveraged out. The third piece is she has to deal with all of these permits, et cetera, um, and will not be able to deal with that lender. That's why she's panicking. We have to be careful not to become a third party participant if this is messy. So we should seek legal advice on that. But, um, my question for her, and I hate to make you the messenger on this, is what's the status of this right now from her side?
Guess I have to, okay, so as of yesterday, the status is, is that she wants to rebuild it. The contractor that she had been working with was not a licensed contractor and wasn't getting a permit and wasn't going through the channels and thought that the property improvement permit from the city was what she needed when she actually needs a building department permit from Pike's Peak Regional Building. So, um, if they want to rebuild it, they need to, they need plans, they need everything.
Yeah, demo plans all the way up.
Yeah.
So that's kind of, as my background as a loan officer, I think that's where the conundrum is happening.
Okay. That, that's helpful.
Do we even know that she has a loan? That it's not owned outright? We don't know that for a fact.
We don't know that for a fact.
Yeah.
But we have to assume that she has some kind of mortgage. She couldn't have paid cash for that when she bought it. If you look at the Secretary of State and I looked at it, um, she's trade, she's done four trade names since she bought it. So something's up here. It's just wonky.
To me, I just want to help her get out from under it because obviously that's what she wants. And I think that property is beneficial to the URA as a creative space. And so, uh, ultimately, from all the conversations that I've had in the walks that we've taken, that property specifically is an important one.
I fully agree with that.
So, yeah, I don't think we're getting in any messy territory because we're not giving her any advice. It's not just as straightforward as possible. So, um, I'm, you know, and we're not giving her any, you know, obviously financial advice or acting as a broker or anything like that, although half the time I feel like we're doing some of that because I'm just trying to walk her very clearly. I know the building permit process and, and
Sure.
and, and having, and she's also referring, and I want to make sure that our, our, um, conversation and our communication with her is, um, is exactly what the city is saying too.
Exactly. We have to be very consistent with this. I agree.
Yeah, the.
Yeah, I, I think along, as far as the city goes, this has come up in council meetings several times. And, and the question has always been, when can we demo this? You know, there, there's precedence from a, a property on Pawnee that nothing happened, nothing happened. Finally, the city had, after, after a year of no action, the city can act. And what they did in that case is they demoed it and put a lien on the property. And I believe that's where the city is leaning now. So it's tricky if we get in there and I think we have to be very cautious and understand what the city's intent is. And it's, I think it's, is it May or?
It's May.
Coming up pretty soon that that, that one year thing will show up.
Yeah, so question for the board is, um, the money that was given, was the money actually given? Okay, the money, so if the city does demo it, could that money be used to pay the lien? I don't know. No. Okay. Okay. Withdraw? Okay, that's the question. I just wanted some clarity on the money was not given. It was offered specifically for demo. Okay, yeah.
It was actually offered specifically for improvement.
Okay, okay.
The, offering it for demo would be another discussion and we never had that.
Okay, thank you so much. I wanted clarity on, on that, that issue because I didn't have that from the notes and thank you. Okay. Well, I'll meet with her one more time and try to get some clarity on this and movement.
And I think Alan's comments are where it rests. I think the city just needs to make a decision and then we see if we're even in the game in any regard.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds to me like they're just waiting for the deadline and, you know, it comes, comes up regularly and council correspondence and so on, so.
So have you seen her or any of her family members come to council or co-owners?
No, it's more, um, counselors saying what's going on because they get feedback and why is that still there? And it's an eyesore, blah, 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 you know? It's the same thing that happened on Pawnee. It just took a long time to get it done.
Well, is she, is she a note, is she aware that she has a deadline and
Yes.
city is gonna likely proceed to raise the building and put a lien on the property?
I think what she's hoping is that the city will grant her an extension. That's what she's hoping. And the city, um, is sort of on the fence whether or not the, you know, whether or not that's, I mean, from the planning department and Denise's perspective, they're on the fence whether that's a, like, what? I mean, obviously it's private property. They're trying to respect her, her wishes and whatnot. But nothing has occurred. So there, you know, they sort of want her to take the lead and no lead has been taken in a year.
Well, I appreciate your, your willingness to work on this, particularly on the potential for long-term use of the entire property. Um, but I think she needs a forceful nudge and, um, that's the city.
Okay, I can communicate that too to the city as well.
And I think the aspect of, like I said, I saw a large group of people, including her on the property in just the last few days.
Okay.
I think she's trying to figure out an eleventh hour plan if there is one.
Right.
And otherwise, I think it will just default as we've discussed, so. But you don't know what people think.
All right then. Good discussion. We move on. Our DCI conference. Thank you all for sending us. It was fantastic. I had a really good time. I won't get into the minutia of it, but I'm sure Elektra has some. Do you have anything to say about the DCI?
Yeah, I, I put them in my, um, in the, uh, executive director report. Um, some pretty extensive notes. I just wanted to make sure everything was picked up and what was relevant for various projects and sites and all, all, and everything. Um, a few things that might be opportunities. Um, I don't know if, if it's of any interest whatsoever and I'll just put it out there. The Challenge Accelerator Program could be beneficial for one of our, one of the property, maybe the Park Row one even. And it doesn't, you don't necessarily have to own the site. I, I was in a silt. Um, the city of, or the town of Silt, I, I did a, um, one of the accelerator programs and then Johnson Town. And they're doing really wonderful things within those communities and it just sort of lifts up the community. Don't know if that is something that, that, that the board is interested in. Let's see, the other thing that came up was a funding opportunity and I don't know if anybody's interested, but it can be anything for, um, community-based economic development. It's CHAFAs direct effect awards and I, this came up because Carolyn Trainey, who's our rep in this region is also a dear friend of mine. And she's trying to just get this out to any of the communities. So I thought I'd bring it to all the communities that I work in. And it's not a huge, it's not a huge, um, grant, but it's for small-scale redevelopment. It could be park row activation. It could be, um, uh, any kind of public realm. It could be community outreach. Um, and it's basically anything that's community-based. So it could be a sort of, you know, it could be an event within the URA. It could be anything like that, if that's of interest. Um, the other thing is that came up is KSU, Kansas State University, does a Brown, Brownfields program and I'm actually one of their, um, providers for Brownfields. Um, and so Brownfields is basically anything that's had something on it. Is how it qualifies and might need a phase one or phase two environmental report. So, um, and that's generally for, and that could be for something down the road as well that's beneficial. Um, and it's through the CDPHE and it's like, basically how it works is KSU is the Western portion of the United States. I think they've got fourteen states that they are the provider, um, for Brownfields redevelopment. So gas stations, dry cleaners, but also anything else actually works. Um, uh, LaFawn could have worked for, for some funding for that because of, uh, you know, so, so that's one piece. Another piece could, uh, become a Main Street community is another, um, is another, uh, thing that could be something to pursue. And that could be the whole of the URA as well as, 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 um, is, as, uh, uh, the rest of Manatee, the Main Street, the whole Main Street. And it's, it does open up some doors for funding for projects in the long run. Um, and that's something that is nationwide. Um, I believe Raton just became a Main Street community, um, and a couple of other places. So that's something to, to consider. Windsor and Johnson Town, both of which I did tours for, were Main Street communities. And it helps with some of the funding to lift some of the projects. That's the only reason to do it. Well, um, and let's see. And then I just added a bunch of notes in the demographic shifts, the tenants of being small, which was the Jim Hyde, um, pieces and, um, small projects, large-scale impact kind of pieces. And, um, also the, uh, Colorado Enterprise Fund, access to capital and local investment could help with LaFawn. Um, and we also did a program, which was a return on emotional investment. So basically like that was one of the big speaker, one of the speakers, it was a woman from, from Austin who does retail specifically. And what she was talking about is how people love their places and specifically pedestrian places and how to foster that sense of pedestrian love for places. One of the other pieces that, that, um, popped up too that was interesting is, is, uh, Greeley has a whole host of art trees that are basically the way they define an art tree along their main street is anything on a post. So it could be anything. And it could be something in, since there's not a lot of space within, within the right-of-way to create shade and a little bit of like pedestrian framing too as, as something and, and maybe with Crane, um, to work with Crane. So, uh, that was sort of, that was the whole host of things. That's my summary of the DCI conference. It was fantastic.
Yeah.
So is there anything, is there anything we can run with immediately that came out of that?
The Main Street piece would be one and then also if the CHAFA piece was interest, of interest. And, and again, that's something that could be used for plantings. It could be used for banners. It could be used. It's not a huge, it's not a huge one, or it could be used for community outreach if we wanted to pursue it.
So I don't know if there's any alternate decision-making going on in town, but we do have our planters.
Yes.
In our zone. Could we apply for some funding there?
Yeah, I think, I believe so. I can, I can ask Carolyn.
I don't remember, Anne, our budget, but I think we spent around a thousand dollars on materials.
Okay. Yeah, that, and then the other thing I was considering is, um, or that I brought up.
Twenty percent this year.
Okay, yeah, of course, everything's more expensive. Yeah. Tariffs, tariffs on, on, well, if we use, well, um, so Anne, uh, so, um, the other thing was possibly moving the banners down and then there's one missing. That was something else I considered. It's just moving them so they're more within the visual sightline and framing the street because they're a little high. Those were the two pieces that I was considering because they're expensive.
I do think the city did that for us.
They, okay, I can reach out to it.
I think they installed it, didn't they? I'm pretty sure they did.
Like.
Yeah.
No, it was the, the URA contributed that.
Installing them though? Who put them up?
The city installed them.
Yeah, the city.
I thought you meant the banners themselves.
Yeah.
No, the city installed them. That was a partnership between the chamber, the URA and the city, and then the city did the install.
Right.
Yeah, I thought just moving them down so they're more visible. Um, and Greeley, they were really low. They were like, I don't remember, like twelve feet up or something. They weren't, they weren't as high as they are there. So it just frames it and feels like more of a pedestrian space. So, okay, well, then I will pursue that as well, those two things, items.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Audrey, want to join us? From Crane.
Hello, everyone. I'm here because Crane is working on some murals along the Creek Walk. And last year, we did a pilot on the back of the visitor's center. I'm sure you've all seen it, but if you haven't, this is half of it. It's been really popular, gotten a ton of positive feedback. And the chambers even, um, giving out coloring sheets of the ducks and the other little animals to children who come in. Um, and this year we're trying to do two murals. We've got match funding for one on the back of the Pool and Fitness Center. And then the two locations that we identified in the URA that would work are on the back of the Park Row Lodge building close to Becker's where you could see it both from the trail and coming up the street and the back of Adams Mountain Cafe. But probably for reasons that you all have discussed, the Park Row people are not interested right now in doing that. The reason we liked the back of Adams Mountain Cafe is because in the summer, it doesn't get covered with the leaves. We really wanted to do the Holiday Inn, but in the summer, you wouldn't be able to see it at all. Um, the other thing that would be nice about that location is the city, it sounds like is trying to do a little pocket park right across the creek from that location. So we are wondering if the URA would like to fund a mural. And what we're looking at is a three hundred square foot mural. And we'd like to ask for fifteen thousand dollars and that would cover the wall prep, renting a boom, materials, and the artist stipend. And then Crane would, Crane would provide administrative support and, um, project management.
Audrey, do you have some budget as well?
We do not. We would provide in-kind services. Um, we do have budget for the one in the city through the match grant.
Don't, don't we have? How much did we budget for? Was it twenty? What did we budget for between the, the signs? The trail walk ones? And I thought we, we did budget for a mural.
We have a sculpture, uh, obligation still too.
Right. That one we're reading on the Dylan just. But I thought we put twenty thousand in for streetscape or something. Okay.
That's at least what I recall.
Um. Audrey, the location of it is, it's facing the creek?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and Crane's goal is to get five murals along the Creek Walk. You know, from beginning to end.
That wooden fence, that's the super long one that's had some graffiti tagging. Is that under consideration as one? The one that's ag- against?
The one that's ag- against, there's like a, a barrier between the, the um, the trailer park and then there's.
On the north side?
Yes.
No, I don't think we've talked about that, which where?
Um, just when you walk up the, the Creek Walk, there's a whole, you remember John, the, the section past the park where they just took down the fences? And.
Yeah.
The city open space piece.
Yeah, there's a wooden fence that's really long. I mean, and it could be, uh, I mean, even a community kind of project too.
We'd have to check in with that property owner, I bet.
Yeah, of course.
I'd, I'd comment. I really like the projects that we do with Crane and I think they're important to the community. And so I would generally support uh, this project. I'm, I'm curious about uh, the one we talked about last week, which was the art signs along the um, we'll call it the east, east of Becker's, that area, and what's the status of that?
On that, we have the art call out and submissions are due May first. And then we're notifying um, the artists by May twenty second and they should go in in the first half of June.
Great. And then as, just as a follow-up, we also discussed the possibility of the art panels along the avenue. Is that even being considered? You know?
Art panels along.
The, the same, same uh, format as along the creek, only along the avenue.
I think for us that would have to be twenty twenty six.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I would support that one also.
Yeah, no, I do like that idea. We struggle with bandwidth a little bit in Crane, but I think we're maxed out for projects for the year, but I do like that idea. Okay.
I would back you up, John, because I am a full supporter of Crane.
I don't know, we've got to find that budget. Looking at the twenty. And probably seventy-five of that is the fifth sculpture.
I think it's fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Yeah.
Fifty, okay.
Audrey, have you guys looked at the, um, is it the Holiday Inn, the one that, that, the big white vase?
That's the one that in the summer you cannot see it because of the shrubberies.
Yeah, we tried that one.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we, we were sure that was gonna be the spot. And then we went last summer and it was like, oh. Because in the winter, you can see it quite a bit.
Right, it's very evident.
Yeah.
So you need, you need an answer today, I assume, because.
Today would be great, but we understand if you all need to take your time and discuss it too.
So is there a discussion, Alan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little ambivalent. I, you know, I haven't had a chance to process this. I haven't seen the, the budget. You know, I haven't had a chance to look at that. I think there are other things that we can do and I'm not, you know, I, I'm just a little ambivalent to just have it popped on me and make a decision today. And um, I think there are other things that we need to do. And you know, our mission is economic development and there, there are other things. And so until I see what, what are, what's left in our budget, I'm, I'm a little bit reserved about this. There's some other things I was gonna bring up in the other business section that I, I just think um, you know, I, I support art, no doubt about it, but we, that's, there are other things that I think we need to address that are pretty important.
Yeah, and while I wouldn't disagree, I think those probably, I mean, we have, if you look at the budget, we have three hundred thirty-one thousand, six forty-three in development agreement, three hundred thousand in redevelopment grants, twenty-five thousand in site improvement grants, and of course, we could always increase the budget if we found things that we hadn't thought of, that we wanted to do. So I think this fits within the hundred and fifteen thousand, which we have spent none of. And I would move that we approve it.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Um, I believe I possibly should abstain since it would be on Adams. So. All in favor?
Aye.
You're not gonna wait.
Okay. All right, very good. So we have three in favor. And any opposed? Two opposed. Motion carries. Barb is requesting a copy of the budget. Ann, can you reemail that out? Thanks. Very good.
Did you want to just mention that Parab approved that money last night?
Oh, yes, one other thing. Um, you all had funded um, the backs of all the signs in Fields Park. And then three more on, by the baseball field. Parab approved to do two more signs front and back on that other side, so we will have five. Yeah, so that project's coming along really nicely.
And it's a great example of collaboration, right?
Yeah, I love that. Thanks, Tim Breznerhand.
So Audrey, on this mural, will that be an artist's call as well?
Yes.
So what's your timeline, do you think?
It would be the same timeline. We'd ask for um, artists to submit by May first. Um, tell them May twenty second, and then it would just be working with the artists and the property owner to figure out when the summer it could go in. Before the weather hits.
So it'll be, it would be accomplished before summer?
I would say it would be accomplished by October.
Well, I mean, this would impact your business.
No.
No, just smokers.
Is it super visible from the creek and from everywhere too? Okay, great. I'll have to look when I walk there again.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Audrey.
I would love one too. Audrey, will you also send the call to, to us so I can just include it in the notes and everything? That would be great. Thank you. Fantastic.
They're pizza ducks. They're pizza ducks. They're pizza ducks.
They look like ducks with bloomers.
They are ducks with bloomers. They do have bloomers. They indeed have bloomers. So I'll just give you a little history of the pizza ducks. So the artist did the mural on the back of the build, of the chamber, the visitors bureau building. But she sent us, when she initially sent sketches of what she wanted to do, they were in black and white and the pizza, the ducks with those little spots on the front, on their little bellies. They look like pepperoni. And so Mary Snyder's. Yes, Mary Snyder's husband, Steve, he's, I think he was trying to disparage the ducks and he said they look like pizza ducks and we were like, the ducks. So now it's caught on and everybody's calling them pizza ducks. Yeah. And they, you were, they will, you will continue to see them go through town. Because we have little cutouts of the pizza ducks now. And Audrey's been painting them in these colors and they're just randomly getting put up around town. They're fun. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I mean, is this any kind of project that could be co-collaborated with like Concrete Couch and, and some of our other project groups?
You mean pizza ducks?
No, the murals. I mean, I would, I mean, those are the kinds of things Steve Wood does all the time.
I think he's on phasing out a little bit.
I know, but I mean, he's got people coming, taking over. As far as some of our local youth and people participating.
Yeah, they can, they can apply. They would be in the.
You could also, I mean.
The school, you know, the.
Yeah, emphasize, we, we met a muralist um, who does a lot with community outreach type, type things. Up at D C I too.
And the other thing is, and you alluded to it, that's one way to encourage a graffiti art artist to do a good thing. And those are the kinds of projects that communities embrace and has a positive outcome. And I think, I think there's alternative ways of looking at an art project like this.
Having more community input and outreach, so there's more ownership and buy-in.
Yes, exactly. That's.
Not just one what? I'm sorry, I don't.
Not just artists applying and they get the job and solo artists as opposed to a community-based.
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying. So basically using the mural as a community building piece, which is that woman that we met up at the, at, at D C I, Chelsea Gilmore. And she does, she did basically, what she did is she did layers of color. And so kids from different grades had like, third grade had all different colors of green. And so it becomes kind of a texture, but they're doing pieces, but you know that you're the one who put the effort into that chunk. And then fifth grade did like save red and I'm just making, and then she painted over it. But not over it entirely, but it had a layer of community input and community engagement. So using a mural as a way of facilitating community engagement is a, is a really smart way to have buy-in and in, in an art project.
My comment about graffiti artists.
Yeah.
That really changes the complexion of what other individuals do in your community. Because they hold up these people artistically. And you've included them. And then it dispels some of the other problem side of that equation. So, I mean, just, just a positive thought for passing on to Audrey to maybe rethink this in a different sort of outreach way.
Yeah.
The church, for instance, uh, sun water. Um, the outreach is everywhere and we're here. I don't have time to do this. So it's amazing how fast it goes. When we were in, um, the last, he put the train setting up a thing out, the park of Garland was there. Got two hundred things as well about the page. Remember that? It's stacks like that. Um, and it was great because it also matched the debt. And set up a training to do that. Said a nurse saying my budget was, was about five thousand. And we had a number of one hundred dollars, five hundred dollars.
And that could be it. Barb is just passing it on to those community members, which I certainly, I mean, we can, we can certainly ensure that that gets done, especially if we're helping fund it.
Some of these projects downtown Colorado Springs on the backs of buildings. It is these kinds of, and I use graffiti lightly, art, mural artists that bring that kind of work to conclusion. And they, and they're very dramatic and they're very impactful and they're very inclusive.
Yeah.
And I just think we need to do more of those kinds of things and keep it in our community in some way then. So, just.
We can, I'll definitely pass that sentiment on to Audrey.
All right, well, let's move on to this.
Maybe we want a life-size of Marcy on the back of your building or something, you know?
She just got a bridge. Isn't that enough? I think she would say that's enough.
Like the one at the Broadmoor with all the, all the old guys? Sorry, that's.
Off the record. Okay, let's move on then to sale of the El Colorado Lodge. Okay, so there's a couple of other things within the U R A. There's the um, sale of the El, or the El Colorado Lodge. I spoke with the owners. And Ann, thank you so much for passing on the tax credit pieces. Uh, they're looking at, it's a group of investors. Part of them are from Manatee, part of them are from Colorado Springs and part of them are from California. And so it's a group of like nine people who have decided to invest in various places. And um, they, uh, the, the woman who I spoke with, her name is Danielle Dunn. And she's in California and she'll be back in late April. And I will meet with her at that point. She was gonna share the color boards and all of the plans of what they're looking at. And um, and I certainly will bring you into that. And if you were interested, since you know the most about that, as far as what everybody has told me, I haven't had the opportunity to walk with you.
And that is the one historic property?
Yes.
So anything they do that affects the exterior will come before H P C. So planning who also should be really knowledgeable about tax credit availabilities.
Okay.
They should be included in discussions.
Okay, absolutely. Um, and they did talk about, we did talk about putting uh, the face that faces the street has nothing on it and maybe there's a way to make it a little more street friendly too. If there's a way to put the same windows in, one on the backside or something, just so that it feels like it's got four sides instead of three would be nice. But when I, when I walked with the mayor as well, I, I walked, uh, he had mentioned a lot of different elements about it. And learning to swim in the pool there and how that place is just a really integral part of the community. And I believe that this group actually, they want it to become a very special boutique hotel. That's what they want it to become. So a little bit different than the approach where it's just, I'm gonna buy a hotel and run it as it is. They're, they, they have um, color boards and designs and, and plans. And so I don't know anything more about what their plans are, but they're also the group that may be interested in looking at Park Row as well as sort of a community piece. Um, but they are not doing it, they're not buying it outright with cash, so using loans and things of, of that nature. So Pat, you might know more about that than me.
Encompass, does that encompass item C as well? Are they the same group buying Emerald Fields?
No, no, no. So Emerald Fields is, is, they just changed their name. And I, I put anything that came up within the U R A, anything I got um, memos or emails on. So they just uh, literally just changed their name and their signage. So the signage has been replaced.
So my question, and maybe Ann knows this, but some of those cabins are units.
They're green.
Green for marijuana usage. Is this group gonna maintain that kind of demeanor of this property?
No.
Okay, that was where I was.
No, that's not. And from what I heard from Danielle, uh, that she said that they're going with much more historic. It's like the, the Navajo, you know, that like the Taos white and the, and black and very elegant. And what they're trying to do is something that is more of a specialized boutique. And make it like a really beautiful sort of like e- experience, which is nice. I'm glad they're doing something that's a little upscale. So, no, that is not, um, the other, uh, yeah, so any other questions on the El Colorado Lodge? And I will have more answers at the end of April when I actually meet with her.
Do you know who the local interests are?
I do not. I will, I will, I will get everybody's name and get, figure out who the whole group is once, once I meet with her in April. Yeah, and I will also, she said she would share her color boards and the plans. So as soon as I find anything, I think that it's important to keep all of those um, accessible to everybody on the board, from like the Dylan prod, property and to across the board. I think everybody here should know what's going on with, with those elements too.
Alan?
Yeah, I was just curious, are, are they considering expanding, adding? Because, because it's a pretty big property.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but I will certainly, I will certainly ask about that as well. I know that they are trying to keep. The historic flavor of the property specifically. But they probably also need to make it pencil. So they may be adding a few or, you know, updating the pool or whatever, some of those things. And turning it into more of like a, a kind of campus boutique hotel. So as far as the green, I will ask. As far as the expansion, I will ask. As far as all the elements, I will ask when I meet with them.
And maybe they want to pursue an Indian blessing on the property.
I will ask them to do that too.
Would be nice.
Certainly. Yeah, the other, the other thing, um, there's a couple other elements with activity in the U R A too. Do you wanna? Okay, I'll just cover those couple things. So um John received an email or, or uh. Sent an email and received a response for the rezoning of the lots. There's a couple of lots. And he copied me on that email. Um, the U R A has rezoned two properties in the U R A to park. Um, land. So one was the property across from Park Row. And I don't know which one the other one was.
The um. The, the Martin open space piece was zoned to open space. And I think the Dylan is being zoned to public facility. Those are the two actions.
That's correct, yeah. And then also the um, uh, planning board or the, the Parks and Rec Board met this week too. And they asked me to, to speak with them. Um, they reached out to me on Facebook, which was weird, but that's how they co- found me. So I sent my phone number and email. Um, to talk to them. A- anyway, cause I've known Danu for twenty years. So I'm not sure why they did that. But anyway, I will be talking to them. And what they were interested in talking about was the portion of the, of the walkway that was in the U R A. From on the backside. And the area where there, where the pedestrian bridge would cross over. So that there was more of a connectivity. There's a whole like wooded area. On the opposite side of El Paso, like it's basically on the backside of all the hotels. Between the river and the backside where we, we walked, yeah. And Dylan has already started construction on their parking lot. John reached out to um, meet with Roy and he was gone. So we're going to try to do that anyway. And I think they're a little over, they're busy at the city.
You know, for what it's worth, excuse me, from. Well, all along the Dylan and west, even including C dot property, there's a lot of wooded area in there. And I don't know if the city owns all of that. And if they don't, and it's C dot right away, there's probably a way to get access to that. But the, the. It's just, to me, it's dying to be more golf, disc golf.
The Frisbee Golf.
Yeah.
Like a full course.
Yeah, exactly. Once you get a pedestrian bridge across it. Which is part of the Dylan project. Then there's two or three more holes in there. And all of a sudden you have a full course instead of a couple baskets. And I don't know if Park Board has looked at that or not. Uh, I suggested it to council a year ago and. Of course, it went nowhere.
That was on my list of things to discuss with the Park Board from your recommendation. Um, to bring it forward. And that's what I'm hoping to do with our walks is just take people's concerns and the things that are. Their priorities and sort of advocate for those at the top of the list. So um. You know, from the part, from our walks and our walks and our conversations. And I want to walk with everybody else on the board here. Pat and Anne and Barb as well to see what your priorities are. And then I'm reaching out to the planning, planning commission as well. And um, and, and the city council too. To, and, and the mayor, of course, I walked with the mayor as well. Just to sort of bring all those pieces together and try to come up with something that's cohesive. Cause so far, nothing is really like opposite of anybody else. It, it seems like. Everybody's got a similar vision for community. And that's all I have for activity in the U R A, I think.
That's plenty. Okay, um, I just, it just occurred to me that Nancy's not here and I never texted her. So we have no, no city council.
I believe we did.
I believe she did.
I think she's on the email list. I'll make sure that she's on the email list. If not, I'll make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, other business.
We have two things tabled until um, until uh, late May, June, which is La, LaFawn. Um, and Paragon, uh, they're, they're waiting until chaffa letters. And then I'm also. Looking at some, some ways that they can make the project work a little better too. Um, and then the Dylan Property City Plan. And there were some interesting conversations this, this month with around the Dylan Property City Plan. That I'll just keep you apprised of, which was the walk with the mayor was really fantastic. And we talked about it as a potential. And, and also the meeting with the housing board. I went to a meeting with the housing board and that's all in my executive director notes. Um, and the housing board is looking to obviously fulfill their Prop one, two, three. And there's funding from DOLA and there's also funding from El Paso County, their revolving fund, which LaFawn has already spoken to them. Um, LaFawn, I don't believe has spoken to the DOLA rep yet. And so I'm gonna try to connect them to help build their stack. Um, but with the Dylan property, the mayor, we talked about. We talked about two different things, just so you know, one was creating kind of an overall parking district through the whole area. So if there's a, if there's actually a shuttle that picks people up, then you, one approach, which um, the mayor. Really liked was looking at all the parking spots as part of the parking district. So you're not just building massive lots after massive lots after massive lots. But you're looking at working with property owners to use their parking as well. And that's something that's been done in a lot of other places. So that the parking, you're not overbuilding parking. And you have a shuttle that circulates people. And then the other piece that we talked about on the Dylan property is using it as a potential land bank for future housing. Um, and I looked at how the product that Fading West does, Fading West is a company that does. Um, modular housing. So they build them in, in um. They build them in the factory in Buena Vista and then they put them in place very quickly. So it's slightly more affordable because the labor is not. You're not spending months and months and years like building. You're just preparing the plot and putting them up. Um, and the property at the Dylan property actually could work really well for that in the future. So as a concept into the future, um, and I uh, looked at just sort of a quick study of that for, for the mayor. And he appreciated that, I hope. Cause it was a great conversation and he, it was good, yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Cause they're. Um, they don't know where to go.
Yeah, so another piece as well is the Black Canyon Open Space is one that we're looking at and um. Or that the city is looking at. And that came up when, in my discussions with, with the mayor and the city manager. And using the, a portion of the U R A for a location to walk from to that spot. Um, and so um, some signage as far as shuttles and as far as access and connection to trails. And I've had two conflicting messaging pieces on trails, which is locals don't want anybody on the trails, but the trails are what we're known for. And the trails bring in tourists. So there's been kind of a, that's some slightly gray area to work through. Um, but that, yeah, anyway. The trails are amazing here too. I mean, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the, you know, and that's something too that would, it'll, you know, maybe eliminate some of the pressure on just the. You know, the incline as well is opening up the trail that goes up the back of. Williams Canyon or some of those other trails too, which is not in the U R A, so not part of the discussion. Okay.
Alan, did you say you had something for other business?
Yeah, I'm sort of sticking my neck out here, but I thought it would be worth at least to see if it, there's any interest. Um. I walk almost every day. I walk over through Adams Crossing, down the avenue and on the trail. And consistently, i- if there's blight in the U R A, it's right at the. The entrance. The, the, the vehicles, the, the mechanical work of the business, right?
Sheldon?
You know, I, I, I hate to, you know, call out businesses, but it's, it's not working. You know, before Adams Crossing, they had a much bigger footprint. And the city, you know, had to appropriate some of the land for the project or the, the WAP had to. And so. Right now, you know, we used to have two auto repair places in Manitou. Now one of them is just vacant. It's for lease. And. I don't know if we would have any way to encourage a movement of Sheldon's to where Manitou Auto used to be. And look at some other use of that because it's, it's like, you know, I, I gave up even submitting complaints. Through C Click Fix, cause it's, it's a daily occurrence that the sidewalks blocked. When you come from the east, the first thing you see. Is a kind of an industrial site. It's not attractive. I, I think it, you know. W- would it be a thing that we could consider to help them with relocation? If, you know, it's a budgetary thing, like moving your whole business. But if you look at the other location, there's much more. There's a bigger place to store vehicles, bigger inside thing. Right now, we often have vehicles sticking out. Into the sidewalk as they're doing mechanical work. So.
Well, I, I make, I mean, I, I agree with you and the, you know, the other, the other side of the street. Not so great either with the Santa Fe with the broken sign, um, the broken part facing the entry. Uh, Sheldon used to work for Charles at Manitou Auto, so I'm sure he knows the building and what have you. I don't know if he owns. The building where he currently is, so.
Did you say he does or he?
Building.
Yeah, cause I, I looked at the, the Sessors website shows it as mani- um, Metal Mamas. I don't know if that's.
That was the previous, that's the previous one.
That, but I mean, is that him or is that? Yeah.
I, I would, um, and I, I think the big issue with Sheldon's is the, the. He's got so many cars and no place to put them. And I have always been open to the idea. That he could rent the back twenty percent of the lot. But I have never been able to. To, to convince Bob Wilcox to agree to that. However, somebody else might be able to talk to him about that.
Oh, I would talk to him.
I mean, if it reduced my rent by two hundred dollars and then Sheldon paid two hundred dollars for that spot. He could park ten to twelve cars back there. He wouldn't have an entrance. He'd have to use my entrance because of those boulders that got put in. You know, and there's no, there's no driveway. So, but I'd be fine with that too. We could just have an agreement. But I think that that would solve a lot of issues if anybody can get anywhere with Bob Wilcox.
I'll try. I've heard about him.
And to, i- if you, if you get somewhere, there will be a plaque somewhere.
Yeah, exactly.
There's.
Yeah.
On the mural.
I, I filed a complaint, uh, the click complaint regarding Sheldon's beca- A, they're parking on the easements. We know that. Um, but they're also, I don't know if anybody's noticed this, cause I walk around over there too. The barrels of toxic chemicals are right next to the creek. You have to be careful with that because what's in there um, is oil and. Whatever they use in cars, I don't know. But that's, there's five barrels now and that's not a good thing.
How does he dispose of them? Do you know? Does he have a service come pick them up or something?
Uh, they've been sitting there for probably, oh, let's see, since early January?
Well, they probably get cycled through.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Like if you're changing someone's oil, they pick it up and they move it on, you know?
No, it's, he's dumping it into barrels. And there's, it's, he's using that car to block that, the barrels. And it's just not good. Um, because God forbid that there would be some kind of a spill or a fire.
Well. I would say. We're not in the business of putting somebody out of business.
No, that's.
So we need to bear that in mind. If we have concerns, I think they should be directed to the city. And somebody on a good neighbor basis ought to consult with him about disposal or waste. And. I think, um. I think you have a good suggestion if we can invoke that in some way. I think that's a good step one.
Yeah, the other piece to really take into account too is what John said. I want to put another emphasis on that is, is. The context surrounding it, because when you come in, you see two rundown motels. And so you're already primed to see that as an additional. Piece that's contributing versus the piece of artwork and all the other pieces in the mural and all the other things. Um, so that it's sort of primed already to see that first. You know, and the other thing might be to put up a slightly larger fence around that's, you know, artful and beautiful so that it's, you're not seeing it as much. And then the other thing is to realize like what he's contributing to the community. There's, there's not a lot of services available in Manitou. That are for locals and that is something to take into account. Um. You know, to, to be able to do some of the things that you need on a day-to-day basis that aren't just for tourists, but all, also for locals is important too. I can go talk to Bob.
If he says that he'll cancel my lease and rewrite one, don't do it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
But I would sublease to him too, if he'd rather do it that way, something. He won't allow me to sublease, but maybe somebody could convince him to do it in this situation.
Okay. Is to do a sublease of, of that end, which is always empty anyway of, you know.
We use the entire lot, um, mostly on Memorial Day weekend, Liberty weekend.
Yeah.
Um, but the rest of the time, it's about seventy percent in the summertime.
But there's enough for his.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If he parks twelve of them down at the back near his business.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be an impact.
He doesn't have, he doesn't have that many. It's just his lot's so small, they're all stacked up right there.
Well, he's using the street too.
Yeah, exactly.
But that's about twelve. I see usually about what, six to twelve cars. And I think that that's.
Would fit nicely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
With our uh, our ant location downtown on Weber, around the corner was a body shop. Uh, a good body shop status symbol. And we did the same thing for them, cause we had a large back parking lot. As we leased a certain number of spaces to them on a monthly basis. So that would be a similar conformance of, of what Farley's talking about. That would be a great solution.
Sounds fantastic. I'll try to work on it with Bob.
Yeah, so for the record, I'm, 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 I support their business. I just wanted. I, I just thought one, one possibility would be a different location. I didn't realize if they were actually in the process of owning the property. Yeah, be, just from looking at their records, I didn't see that. But. It, it's just if we can clean it up and make it more attractive entrance into Manitou. I think that's. The goal.
Do you want the fence and we paid for the, his mural?
Yes.
Do you want to talk to um, the Santa Fe Inn too again at some point? I mean, it's half Colorado Springs, half. Manitou, which makes it complicated, but it is. Our entrance and it. You know, it's taken the place of LaFawn on some level. It's the most decrepit hotel on that strip. I don't know. It does.
It does.
Yeah.
It's home to many of my disfarshers. They don't, they don't last long. They last like a week and a half. So sad. Okay, folks.
All right, I don't think we have anything else.
Alan, did you have anything else under other business? Does anybody else have anything? Very good. All right then. Uh, I will seek motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor. Bye-bye. Okay.
So Elektra is gonna hold us accountable that we all have to walk with you?
Yes, I would like that very much. So. Oh, whenever. I'm good on your schedule, honestly. Yes, I would love to walk with you. Absolutely, absolutely. You just tell me what works for you. I'm, I'm good.
I just have to find a spot.
That's fine. Do you wanna? Don't tell me that. I'm already drowning my calendar. Well, sorry about that. And I apologize for adding things on. I won't do that in the future. As well as like changing the meeting. I sent the meeting to the city and without requesting for a change. Yeah, I would love that. And Pat too, I'd love to walk with you as well. Alan Gregory, is he in health to walk or is, I don't know his status. I've never met him in person. Okay, okay. I've, I've never met him in person. So I've just.
He just doesn't wanna walk to this meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was concerned about too.
I think he.
Okay. No, maybe it was yesterday, it was the, yesterday? Okay, well, I'll make sure that the executive director, I also sent a link to you because there was some issues, obviously, opening things up. And so I just sent a link to Dropbox. I thought, okay, well, let me look. My email yesterday was acting really bizarrely. And so I will resend out the executive director report because my email was so slow yesterday. I kept sending things and then I don't know what was going on in Cheyenne Canyon, which is, yeah. That'll go over well. That'll go over well. Yeah.